Steve, you want to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation indivisible, under God, liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
See, I learned something in grade school.
Thanks again, Tony, for putting that up there.
Yep.
All right. So has everybody had an opportunity to look at the manifest?
Yeah.
Any questions, comments, or? I don't know if it's me. I don't know if it's me, but I can barely hear you, Tony.
I'm probably just mumbling.
Okay. All right, because I know I got my speaker thing all the way up, so I'm partially deaf anyhow, so.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm, I'm good, nothing unusual.
All right. So if, if everybody had an opportunity to look at that, uh, we can have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest of February eighth, twenty twenty-one, and the payroll manifest February ninth, twenty twenty-one.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, I've been Bartlett.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Morin.
Okay. And, um, the minutes for non-public, uh, has everybody reviewed those?
Those are the ones that got sent out again today, right?
We got one eleven, and I guess was that one twenty-five as well?
One twenty-five.
Yeah, I personally didn't have any changes or corrections to make.
Okay, so I was not there on any of those meetings, so I will not be voting to approve those, so I'll abstain.
Okay.
Can we go back to that?
Which one?
Well, we just lost the whole lot, there you go, thank you.
Sorry, yeah.
No problem, I make a motion to approve the non-public minutes, uh, for January eleventh and January twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Morin.
And, uh, we have one abstention, I've been Bartlett. So, reports from assigned boards and committees, uh, budget?
Uh, nope, haven't had a meeting. We're waiting on deliberation.
Excellent. Planning board?
Yeah, planning board, we had met on the twenty-seventh, and a couple cases came before the board, and, uh, I would note that the one case is, uh, will be back on, uh, Wednesday of this week. That's about it.
Okay. CIP.
Right, Tyler, was there anything important, I mean, just curious, any subdivisions or anything that were talked about, or is that was just like little stuff?
That was, well, we had the, uh, one was, uh, case twenty dash zero zero nine dash sub, that's the application from, uh, Maryland and, uh, Jeffrey Cole, uh, the subdivision, the thirty-one point acres into six lots on, uh, and it's, uh, around Smoke Street, Canard, uh, Road, and, um, that's the one, they're, they're coming back, I believe it is on Wednesday. And then we had, the other one was the one I had mentioned over on, um, King Fisher, where they were swapping the property.
Right, yeah, okay.
Tyler, I think this week is, um, the change of use on one fifty-six for the, uh, snowmobile races, right, is that this week also? There's been a flurry of stuff going on in the office, it made me feel like it was happening this week. Uh, I only mention it because, um, board members, you're gonna see a, uh, proposed licensing policy, uh, probably before your next meeting, the department heads are looking at it right now. When we did the snowmobile approvals last year, we, we kind of had two things left to do, one was to go to the planning board, and the other was to get our own licensing house in order, so you'll be seeing that in a couple weeks.
Ooh. Is that gonna alleviate some of the friction that, that our prior approvals made with like, you know, with the planning board and whatnot?
That's, yes, we would, we would assume so, yes.
Okay. Anything on CIP?
Uh, so, we met, I think it was the Tuesday or Wednesday after our last meeting, and we finalized our work on the CIP tables, all that information, the narrative, uh, everything that's going into the town report, it's all completed and been turned in.
Awesome, okay.
So we're done for this.
And, uh, three hundred?
A three hundred, uh, I got together with Steve last week, uh, we were starting to go ahead and, uh, get this, uh, advertising book put together, so.
Okay.
Okay, Tyler, may I add something?
Yeah.
Uh, very exciting, we're going to, the three hundredth with the Nottingham Stogge Society is going to launch a series of lectures on, the first one will be on, uh, Wednesday, or Thursday, the twenty-third of, uh, February at seven o'clock, on the tuba titled The Geology of the Potawatomi Area with a state geologist, and then on March twenty-third, again, these are all by, by Zoom, there'll be a talk on loons from the Loon Preservation Society, so there, there's some real, besides Tyler's, the book we're making, or Tyler's very helpful with, there's, uh, there's gonna be two Zoom conferences coming, two Zoom lectures from the three hundredth.
Where are those posted, Steve?
Uh, they will be posted right now, I think, uh, Rhoda has put them in, uh, one of their friends, one of the, one of the Facebooks. And Tony's been helpful in getting us, uh, the Zoom links.
You said that the first one for the Potawatomi Mountain thing is on February, what?
Twenty-third at seven P M. And that's gonna be the geology of the, uh, whole area, which is fascinating.
Okay. Uh, I don't think there's any changes in Marston, Donna's not here, Chris, there's no changes in Marston, was there?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So, uh, without further ado, if you want to, Chris, roll right into, uh,
Before you go back, before you do that, there was actually, um, non-public meeting minutes from January twenty-fifth, did you decide to hold off on those? Did I miss that?
No, we approved both of those.
You approved both of them, okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Lorraine. Chris, you're up.
Uh, okay, um, uh, board members, you may not have even seen it yet, we just got it, uh, this afternoon, uh, but the, uh, Tweed versus Nottingham lawsuit that relates to the chemical trespass, uh, rights-based ordinance from town meeting a couple of years ago, that, uh, that's decision on, um, a, uh, summary judgment came through today from the Superior Court, uh, the court ruled in the plaintiff's favor, finding that, uh, the ordinance violates state and federal provisions in a number of places. This is kind of what we expected. No real practical implications, uh, at this point for that, because you had agreed early in this lawsuit not to enforce the ordinance while the lawsuit was pending, that was one of the things that we, um, had done to, uh, try and speed that process up and not make it cost too much. So that is, that is a, uh, a significant step in that process, um, and, and the ordinance is, uh, effectively null and void, uh, lacking some other court action. If you have any questions on that, or if you, if you have any that you'd rather do offline, uh, and I can run through, uh, counsel, let me know, uh, I could, I don't think I can answer too much, but if you have any, I, I can try.
Well, I think the only outstanding question at this point is the question of attorney fees. So, and we already know the, you know, the, you know, the parameters around that, so.
Yeah, that we, we would expect that to be the next step. And that, and the only remaining step that we're aware of.
Yeah.
All right, um, uh, as I, uh, told you in email yesterday, we had a, an accident involving one of our, uh, plow trucks yesterday. Um, nobody injured, um, on Cooper Hill Road, uh, our truck was basically on the bridge, um, that goes over that big culvert there at the corner on Cooper Hill, uh, another, uh, vehicle came the other way, uh, skidded and, uh, smacked into the uh, front corner of the plow on our truck, um, no damage to our truck, but significant damage to the other vehicle, so, that's really everything we know about it at this point, like I said, nobody hurt, um, no, no damage to our property, uh, waiting on the police report, and Primex, our insurance company, has everything on it, uh, from here. There were, there was actually another crash in town at the same moment, so we had Northwood, uh, police responding to the crash with our vehicle. Those are, it was pretty bad for a couple hours, I guess, I don't know if anybody was out driving, but that was pretty rough. Um, our guys missed the game pretty well, all of it, I think it bits and pieces, but they were out all until about one o'clock last night. Um, uh, the moderator is gathering officials to begin working on the physical space plan for, um, deliberative session and for voting day. Uh, asked if, if, and I'll be participating in that, but if, uh, a select board member, any of you wants to join in, please let me know, uh, we're not gonna make a big committee out of it, but we're gonna have to have a couple conversations between now and, and, uh, when those meetings kick off, uh, there'll probably be a member of the school board and, um, member of the school staff involved, as well as our election officials, so if you want to partake in that, please let me know.
Yeah, I can help you with that.
Okay, thanks, Tony. Um, uh, and, and then the last thing in COVID-related news, we have one employee home right now, uh, symptomatic, I haven't heard about test results, but it sounds likely, uh, uh, that person is okay, they're, uh, uh, still getting some work done remotely, um, but, uh, definitely affected. And also COVID-related, the rec department's starting to plan, uh, outdoor events, uh, that we typically have, uh, we don't know that we're gonna be able to pull them off, but we're gonna start planning them. Uh, we's not really we, it's really Courtney and Bridget, but, um, talking about the fishing derby, the egg hunt, um, those outdoor spread-out events, uh, they think they can do, uh, safely, uh, at this point, even, and things may look even better in March and April, uh, you know, in terms of, uh, the general population, but, uh, if, if the board has no objections, we're gonna, we're gonna start advertising those things, and as if, uh, we're gonna be able to do them, uh, they may look a little different, but, um, they think they can pull them off, uh, safely, all outdoors at this point.
I have no objections to that.
And I think that is all I have, yeah, that's it.
Okay. Actually, I had a review from, uh, last meeting. Do we have any?
Do we have any, Lorraine?
Deeding properties.
I'm sorry, what was that, Lorraine?
Tax deeding properties.
Okay.
Didn't we already vote on that?
Yeah, that last meeting, yep.
Okay. So what, what remained unfinished that we had an action item?
I, I don't think there was any action for the board to take.
I don't recall it.
Can we put something up there like next to it, you know, what it is, and then if we don't, just put none or something, so that we can just kind of move right along, is, is that something that we can do?
Yeah. We can, we can talk to Kelly about that.
Okay. Uh, assessing? Everybody, uh, had an opportunity to look at the, uh, ones down below?
Yep.
I haven't, I haven't gone through the abatements, but I looked over the vet credits. I don't, I don't have an issue with them.
Um, Chris, did, I know that was an issue last time, so. Chris, give me some guidance on, on, on this, on as far as talking, and I understand that if we were to talk about it, we can't talk about personal.
No, these are, these ones are different, these are, uh, these are just abatements, in the classic, um, you know, the, the, the owner believes the, the property is assessed incorrectly, so, uh, there is no personal information associated with these, like there were in the hardship cases that you, you dealt with in prior abatements, so these are all public business, uh, no need to only punches or do anything in non-public here, this is all about the property and not about the, the people involved.
Okay, just a suggestion, do you want to go and, um, just firstly approve the two vet credits?
Yes.
Now we can talk about the other two individuals?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
Tony?
Say again?
Go for it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the select board approve the two veteran credits, uh, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, I've been Bartlett.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Morin.
Okay. So we have about thirteen minutes, do we want to dive into this, or?
Yeah, I have, uh, on tax map sixty-eight lot one oh four, after reading that right there, I would agree with Avatar's assessment and, and their opinion on it.
Anybody else had any, uh?
The.
I think it's a very fair compromise.
Yeah, let me, let me, uh, give that a quick look. Ah, speed reading. And that came from John cabin. Yeah, I, I'd agree with John, I think that's, I think it's fair. Sixty, map sixty-eight, one oh four.
Yep. Right.
Do you need a motion, Chris?
Yes, you need a motion with the dollar amount of the abatement.
Okay.
I don't have that in front of me.
That's, uh, Avatar's recommendation was.
Was it four oh seven or something?
Uh, a revised assessment of four oh seven, four hundred, and an abatement on the difference of twenty-nine thousand five hundred.
All right, I'll make a motion that the select board approve the abatement for map sixty-eight, lot one oh four, the new assessment, or with a revised assessment of four hundred and seven thousand four hundred dollars, and an abatement uh, difference of twenty-nine thousand five hundred.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, I've been Bartlett.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Morin.
Okay.
This one here I was torn on.
Yes, I am with you.
I do not think the assess, I do not think their assessment value is wrong, but I do agree, after walking by their house the other day, uh, from the lake, it is steep, very steep, and I don't think they should ever change that from sleep to rolling, or, uh, because it's steep. And I mean, when I'm saying steep.
Yep.
You like walking up a, a, two stories or, or more.
John. Can you hear me, John?
Yeah, I got you.
All right, um, just, just, um, educate me a little bit on, on this, because I know you've been part of assessing here for a little bit, uh, you know, changing it to, what, what would it, would it change the dollar value?
That, that's, that's just where my heart, that's where my problem comes in, I don't think that Dolly Valley for, for the overall property is bad, or where it is off by any means. So I, I'm more confused with Avatar, why they, I mean, I understand from reading why he would, um, why he says it could go to rolling from steep, but it was always steep before.
Right.
You look at his past ones, it said steep, you look at the properties around him, they're steep, real steep.
Yep.
And compared to other properties on the lake, knowing the lake very well, uh, I could name quite a few other properties I'd probably consider rolling, but in this section of where they are on the lake, it's steep.
Yeah.
Because even when you go look at the water, I mean, out the edge of the property, within fifteen feet out, it's dropping fifteen feet, so I mean, it's a cliff that they're on, and the people who owned it before built the retaining walls to reduce the steepness, but the lot is traditionally steep, so I don't thi, I mean, I can't see that, that's where I'm torn, where I don't know what to say or how to do it, I, I think it should stay steep, but I don't think the value should change. I think that the era should be changed back to the way it was.
Okay, but changing it back to where it was will not change the value, or will it?
No, it will, it, um, I mean, it technically could, as what the, um, the plaintiff wrote about it, you know, saying that it could change its value like fourteen thousand dollars, right, I mean, we're not talking huge, but again, I think it's a, um, misstep on Avatar, and I'll call him out on it, that they should have never did it, but.
Okay, so.
And I believe that Avatar, when they went around to this last assessment, you know, they did a lot of, uh, roadside views and just drove by.
Yes.
Now, when you look at this property from the back, because of all the fill that's been brought in to raise it, to make it a parking area, sure, it might look rolling, but when you look at it from the other side, it's straight up. And we're talking well over thirty-some steps from the water to get up to the, the, the basement of the house, not even to the first floor, so.
Okay.
That's why I think it's wrong, I think it should be steep, but I don't think the value should change, but I think they should grammatically change the, uh, the tax card.
I would have to agree with you on that, John, um, Tony, Tyler?
I, I don't know how to handle it from there, though.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, like, like John's, it sounds more like a, a clerical error in classification and terminology, but, but, you know, potato, potato, if it's not gonna change the value of the property, you know.
Well, it technically should.
Yes.
But steep properties are gonna be worth less than rolling. But again, I don't think the value of the house is really wrong, so, and again, I'm not a, I'm not a professional praiser, I'm not any of that, but you know, when you start comparing it to other houses, other properties on the lake, the total assessed value is not, I don't think is wrong by any means. I just think Avatar messed up, and they should just have said, sorry for the mess up, and make it steep. And leave it right the way it is.
So can, can we have Avatar go back out there and reassess this whole thing again?
I think they already did, and I think John's just stepping up, you know, he had different data saying why he thought it could still be classified as sloping, but if you read what the other guy wrote, what I've read online, for what state standards are and everything, for what's considered steep, the guy qualifies for steep, so. I think we're in a, a conundrum between Avatar and the homeowner, and I don't know.
All right.
From the, from the select board's perspective, I think the fir, first and foremost, really all you have to worry about is the total value of the property. Uh, how Avatar gets there, doesn't really change your, your vote very much, we can talk about process, and we could even ask them to maybe go back and look at it from the, from the lakeside, um, but you, the, the decision that is before you is, what do you do with the total assessed value? More than it is, what do you do with the individual aspects of the, the record card?
Well, we're gonna do it that way, then I'd make a vote that we keep the assessed value, but again, changing the record card for the future is the proper thing to do. I don't think his value should go down.
I mean, that, that makes sense.
Or whatever that he's at, I think is, is very fair.
Yeah, that, that makes sense to me, too, I mean, you know, that definitely fixed the terminology issues on the card, but.
So, John, you've seen the, you've seen this property, as I have too, and the property next.
Backside, yep.
Um, the, the property next door, I mean, there's really not much difference between the two as far as, uh, um, you know, steepness and, and all that, I mean, they both got retaining walls up and all that, but it looks like there's a, a difference of.
You go down, then if you went to the next property, you'll see that, the, the road starts to slope downward.
Yeah.
The properties do start to slowly decrease in steepness.
Okay, but I'm, I'm.
And the property on next to them, um, are very steep.
So the one.
They're like in the little gully area of steep, I mean, it's just a, how the lake curves in, the hill goes straight up.
Right.
The other ones would be more questionable on between rolling and steep.
But is it safe to say, uh, uh, that seventy-one is, 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 uh, very much the same as sixty-nine, as far as steepness?
No, seventy-one, which is the property that we're talking about, right?
No, we're talking about sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine, the one we're talking about, is steeper than the other one, seventy-one.
Okay.
I mean, we're talking, I don't know if it's five feet steeper or six feet steeper, but it's steeper.
Okay, so again, John, I mean, you've got more experience in this, uh, as far as assessing goes, what do you, what are you recommending?
Well, if we could, I'd say we deny it, uh, but we do request that Avatar, I mean, again, in my opinion, they should change it back to steep. And I don't, again, I, I don't understand the reason why they thought from all the years that they had it as steep, where, how, how it turns to rolling, when the guy hasn't done anything to the property.
Right.
Really reduced. You know, he, he didn't change it, it's just steep all along, it's been steep for as many years I've been staring at it, so I don't see where they came off excited to call this one rolling. Because it is probably one of the ten percent of the lake, this is like that ten percent area that's, that's the steepest parts. So I, I don't see why Avatar, I, I'd like to know why Avatar changed it. When they had, were they wrong before, for all those years? Again, it just seems weird that they, I, again, I don't know.
Tyler?
No, I'm listening. Listen and learn and help.
Chris?
Yes.
Can we table this for the time being, until we get an explanation from Avatar?
Yeah, yeah, uh, but, uh, if you're, if you're comfortable where the, where the assessment is, I, I don't know if, if you have a consensus on that, um, it, it won't really matter what the underlying data points are, if, if you're comfortable where the assessment is, so.
My, my concern is, is if we change it from rolling to steep, it could, it could potentially, I'm not saying it would, it could potentially change the value of it somewhat.
Yes, that's why I'm suggesting you not dictate the, the, the finer points, uh, and, and use your judgment on the total value of the parcel. Um, and we can do, we, we'll go back and revisit that steeper or not question, but, um, I, I think you don't, you don't want to get into the business of micromanaging those little elements on the, on the tax cards, you want to make sure that, that you're getting a good total value at the, in the end product. Does that make sense?
If we do it that way, then I, I'd say that we deny the application. Agree with Avatar.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say as well to go with their recommendation.
I agree.
So I make a motion that we, um, we deny the application for a lot, uh, excuse me, map sixty-eight lot one oh four, and keep it the way it is.
I'll second that.
Okay, for, for discussion here, so we leave it as rolling?
Until clarified by, I mean, again, I, I disagree with them being rolling, but like Chris said, we're, I don't think the value is off, so if we change it, the, um, the plaintiff is asking that his value drop fourteen thousand dollars, which we're not, I don't feel comfortable doing.
All right, so Chris, say this gets denied tonight, and Avatar changes it back to steep, he can come back and, 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 uh, for another, uh, uh, abatement, right?
Um.
How does that work?
I, I, I guess since something changed in the underlying record, maybe they could, uh, but they might have to wait until the next tax year to do that, when it would take effect.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Come back to me.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Morin. Hi, John Moore.
I've been Bartlett. Okay. So are we ready for? You have our notes on that going forward, right, Chris?
Yeah, we'll, we'll loop back around with Avatar on the, on the steep question.
Alright, so uh, the next item up is our seven o'clock appointment.
Yes. Yes, so uh. You, Anthony Weatherby from New Hampshire DOT is here along with a number of other folks who I. I, I'm not as familiar with. He did send us everybody's name ahead of time. Uh, Anthony, it looks like Tony here has got your PowerPoint up on his screen.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and I will hand it off to you.
Okay, um, should I? Request control so I can scroll through it, or would you rather me share my screen? I have the same PowerPoint up, um.
Tony, what do you, how do you want to handle that?
I, I mean, I can let you show your screen, you can just say next page and I'll move it along.
Okay, uh.
I mean, it's that easy, right?
So, okay, I'll, I'll have you move it along then. So, alright, well, let's get started then. My name is Anthony Weatherby. I'm the project lead for this New Hampshire DOT. Um, bridge replacement project. Um, in the meeting with us, we have David Scott. He's the New Hampshire DOT Design Chief. We also have Jason Tremblay. He's the Senior Engineer from New Hampshire DOT. We have Rebecca Martin with us. She is New Hampshire DOT's Environmental Manager on the project. And we have Tom Levens of GM2. And uh, he's with the consulting firm that was hired to do the design work on this project. Um, so the, the purpose of bringing this meeting to you guys uh, this evening is to. Explain the. Purpose and need for the project. Um, so we're just gonna go over very introductory um, information. Um, explaining the need for the project and, and then we're also going to gather your initial feedback, whereas this is the first time. Um, we presented it. Um, we just wanna get you an initial feeling on the project, so. We're at a. The very beginning stages. Um, we have looked at, um. You know, some different options, just sort of thinking outside the box and. And, and some of our more traditional methods too, um, but, but we'll get into that, um. So, let's um. Well, I guess I can stay on this slide, so the, the, let's go to the next slide, actually. Alright, thank you. Um, we're on New Hampshire Route one fifty-two over the North River. Um, I'm sure you all know where it is, but we've got the elementary school. On the corner there and the fire department, we are aware is also in the vicinity. Um, so let's, next slide, please. Um, it was constructed in nineteen twenty-five. Um, it was widened in nineteen seventy, so it's. Up there in years. Um, it's got a seventeen foot clear span, um. It's somewhat of a unique bridge with the concrete jack arch deck and um, steel beams. And then um, a, a different widened portion of the structure. That's a normal concrete slab. Um. I guess we don't need to get into that, but um, the, the roadway width is twenty-nine feet wide through there. Um, three thousand, three hundred vehicles per day. Um, it's been on the red list since twenty. Twelve. So, next slide, please. Um, these are just some pictures of the site uh, in. Back when we had warmer weather. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, you can see this is the North River, so looking downstream and upstream. Next slide. Thank you. Um, so this, this kind of gets into the condition. Um, it's red listed because mainly of the substructure. Um, you can see the concrete is, um. Actually, you, you guys can't see my cursor, can you? So, okay, nevermind, I won't point, um. Yep, so the concrete uh, in the leftmost picture is um, degrading. You can see that white. Um. Aphorolence there, we have rebar exposed. And on the picture in the, on the right, we have. Um, piles, so right at the water line, you can see that those are rusted. Um. So, that's the main issue, the, the superstructure, so, so the deck part that you drive on is also in poor condition. But it's in a little bit better condition than the substructure. Uh, next slide. Um. We went over that. Um, let's move on. There we go. Um, okay, so now this gets into some of the replacement options we've been considering. Um. Due to the hydraulic opening and the way uh, wetland rules are now. Um, we need a larger span than they, than they thought they needed. Almost a hundred years ago, so we're looking at a thirty-foot span right now. Um. To accomplish that, we're looking at a precast concrete rigid frame. Um, supported on precast concrete pedestal walls and spread footings. Um, or potentially supported on steel piles. Uh, because it's so early, we don't have borings yet, so we'll know more about what we can do and what we can't do once we get those. Um, but that's what we're looking at. So far. Um. It will be, the, the proposed structure will be slightly wider, but um, it'll be about the same width, so let's, um, let's go to the next slide. Um, here's just a typical deck section. Um, it would be a, a fill-over structure. Those are usually desirable when we can do them. Um, the, the superstructure is more protected from road salts, so they typically last longer. They're less maintenance. Um. Um, but this shows the section with the, with the width, we would have two four-foot shoulders and two eleven-foot travel lanes. Um, next slide. And this is just a plan view. Um, you can see that it's longer thirty-foot clear span. Um, next slide. So, the big issue on these projects is how to handle traffic. Um, we've looked at. We're aware of three options, um. And depending on how you all feel, um. That will direct how, how we look more in the future. So the first one. I would say this is the most um, desired option. Uh, it's called accelerated bridge construction. So what that would involve would be closing the road down entirely. Um, traffic would have to be detoured along Route um, one fifty-two to Route four and then down to Route one twenty-five. Um. The closer, closure duration of one fifty-two would be. One month. Um, and the. Duration of the entire construction, uh, construction would be one season, um, and that's. To address um. Other parts of the project we can do while the road is open. Um, so that's. The reason why that's the most desired alternative is because. Um, of the condition of the substructure, so. The next alternative would be phased construction, and that's what you're probably used to seeing out on the roadways. Um, you know, they, they close one lane of the road and they rebuild that section. And then they switch traffic onto the new section and rebuild the last remaining portion. The reason why that is tough here is because the substructure is so bad. Um, it's gonna be hard to, to disturb one half while keeping the other half. Um. In good enough shape to have traffic be on it. Um, also, the original structure built in nineteen um, twenty-nine. I believe, um, what was a masonry rubble abutment and it's been faced with concrete. So. That might be hard to, um, I guess if you can imagine, you know, cutting a clean line. Um, down the substructure and then building a new substructure next to it. Um, that, that's gonna be a little harder to do here due to that substructure. Um, usually when we do phase construction, we're just replacing the superstructure and not necessarily everything else. Um. So, um. Phase construction would be more expensive in order to deal with, with those complexities. Um, and then on a similar vein, um, an offline temporary bridge, um, we would. Construct that while traffic is on um, one fifty-two. And then. Once traffic is able to use the temporary bridge, we would close um, the former section of one fifty-two. Take the bridge down, rebuild it, and then move traffic back onto the new bridge and then remove the temporary bridge. Um. If you remember from the pictures, the, the water is. The North River gets pretty wide right there, um, and there's a lot of wetlands in the area, so a temporary bridge. Um. It, it's a very difficult location to, to get a temporary bridge. Um. So those are, those are the three options initially that we're looking at right now. Um, I, I definitely understand that. Maybe none of them seem good, but we'll, we can get into that. Um. So, next slide, please. Uh, this is a picture of the detour. Uh, it's twenty-two miles and that's, that's the tough, that's the tough sell about the um, closure. Um, it is. Shorter on local routes, but obviously we, we would only sign. The detour to be on state roads. Um. But we anticipate that, you know, local traffic would figure out the shortest way to get there, so. So these roads could also see an increase in traffic as they try to avoid the detour. Um. Next slide, please. So, um. Sort of unrelated, we, um, cultural resources. Um, the bridge is not eligible, um, because it was rebuilt uh, in nineteen seventy. Um, they're not recommending, um. No, no further archaeological surveys are required. Um. And the preferred alternative would have no impacts to the surrounding properties from a, from a historical perspective. Uh, next slide, please. Um, now getting to the natural resources, um. It's a designated river. Um, it's a protect, we're working in a protected shoreline. Um, so we would need a standard dredge and fill permit from DES. Um, it's also considered a priority resource area, um, so. This means that this, this wellend is just considered a little more special than some of the others. Um. We have some federally listed species in the area, um, plants and bats. We have some state-listed species, turtles, snakes, mussels and fish. Um, those are just. To give you an idea of some of the species that they're trying to make sure we, we don't harm as a result of this project. Um, and it's also part of the wildlife corridor. Um. So as part of the structure, we're, we're proposing to build a, um, uh, we call it a wildlife shelf, so it's just. A um. Extension of the abutment that's above the water that small critters can use to. Um, get to the other side of the road without having to go over the road. Um. Typically, DES requires those, so we're anticipating putting one of those in. Um, next slide, please. So, um. I will. I'm gonna kick it off to Rebecca Martin. She is going to. Read a environmental statement for you all, um. And then she's going to kick it back to me, um, and then we'll go over. I'll, I'll let you guys, um, tell me. How you feel and, and we'll ask you questions about the slide that's up here, so, so with that, I'll give it to Rebecca.
Great, thanks, Tony, and uh, thanks, everybody, for having me here tonight, and I thought Tony did a great job going over the resources, so I'll give you my short version here. Um, as part of the National Environmental Policy Act and other state and federal regulations. The Department of Transportation has to investigate any potential impacts our projects will have on the surrounding cultural, natural, and also the social environment. So if we're able to identify key resources in the area, area early, that allows us to plan for those, so if you know about other resources that, um, we should know about, please. Um, alert us to those. Uh, part of our review involves historic resources, and in accordance with Section one oh six of the National Historic Preservation Act. Uh, we're reviewing the project area to determine if there are any historic resources in the area that might be impacted by the construction of this project. Those historic resources could be any buildings or structures that are fifty years old or older. Um, as well as archaeological sites can also count as historic properties. In addition to age, um, those resources have to be assessed to see if they are eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. Uh, Tony mentioned earlier that the bridge was evaluated and found not to be eligible, mostly due to that reconstruction that Tony mentioned. An archaeological survey, as Tony mentioned, was completed and they, the result was that they didn't think any additional survey was needed. And uh, the preferred alternative that uh, was shown tonight wouldn't impact other structures that are greater than fifty years old in the project vicinity. Um, in complement to that review, we're asking that if anyone has particular concerns about historic or archaeological resources. Uh, you bring them to our attention tonight or contact us after the meeting. Uh, because Section one oh six also offers folks with direct interest in historical resources, including town officials and historical societies. An opportunity to become more involved as an advisor to the um, to the Section one oh six review as a consulting party. So if anyone's interested in learning more about that, please let us know and we can get you some more information. As for natural resources that Tony mentioned, we're anticipating the need for a wetland permit from the Department of Environmental Services and also from the Army Corps of Engineers. Um, due to the impact to the North River and those surrounding wetlands that uh, Tony was talking about. As the project moves forward through design, we'll continue to coordinate with those agencies to avoid impact, avoid and minimize impacts to the greatest extent possible. As well as any of the species of concern that might be in the area that Tony had mentioned before, so we'll be coordinating with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and New Hampshire Fish and Game Department. Um, and incorporating any conservation measures that are needed. As far as water quality goes, um, we don't know yet if uh, stormwater treatment would be needed for the project. It'll depend on. Um, what the project ends up being, what the preferred alternative is, but either way, appropriate erosion and sediment controls will be used during construction to protect uh, water quality in the area. Um, so that's all I have. Back to you, Tony.
Okay, thanks, Rebecca. Um, so. Do you all have any preference? Would you like me to go through this list, or is there anything that you all would like to? To say right off the bat?
Tony. Tony, if I could just uh, jump in here.
Sure.
This is Ben, um, Chair of the Board. Um. If we were to do. I, I think I would prefer the, the ABC, the first one there, but I know realistically that, 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 that's probably not gonna work, because. As, as the previous page had pointed out, twenty-two miles for an alternate route, that's, that's a, a long ways for our police and fire to respond to uh, uh, an emergency. And to rely on a, like the next town northward to, to cover part of West Nottingham, their fire department is a significant ways up Route four. So the, the response time would be uh, pretty significant. Uh, but obviously, I, I'd want the, the fire chief uh, and the police chief to weigh in um, as this goes on. But I'm just curious, uh, uh, you know, if, if we. Go the route as a temporary bridge, I would assume the state would. You know, return that area back to its original form the best that they, they possibly could, correct?
Yes, um, it, it would have to be restored. It, it, there would be significant wetland impacts with the temporary bridge, um. So there would be quite a bit of. Coordination with DES on restoring it back to the way they wanted. Um, and then I'm, I'm not sure if. If that would end up increasing um, impacts to the, um. I don't know how to say it, um, Rebecca mentioned the archaeological. I'm, I'm not sure if they'd have to do an additional survey. Um, if we were gonna go well outside our project area. So it would be restored. I do think that would be the, the most expensive option, because restoring something is expensive.
So, I just want to make sure I understand correctly when, when you say one construction season. Right above it says one month for closure. Construction season is the entire spring, summer, fall, right, and not one month, correct?
Yes, um. And I'll elaborate on that, so there's quite a bit of work that the bridge contractor would do while traffic is still using. Um, the old structure and also the new structure. Um, they might have to do, um, you know, things like paving and, um. Guard rail and, um. Um, they might have to do, um, you know, things like paving and um guard rail and um and any sort of substructure work, like, you know, um stabilization. They can do a lot of that work with the road open, so they would do as much as they can with traffic there and then everything they can't do, they would do in the shortest amount of time possible, which would be the one month.
So they could do all the prep work in the spring, come summer when school's out. If they have to take down the bridge altogether, that'd be only one month? If we were to do the first one?
Yep.
Okay.
That, that's not bad in terms of impact compared to a, to a two-season project, right?
My only concern, police and fire response.
Yeah, but now, Tony, you said that the twenty-two mile detour. Now I'm gonna go back up to that slide just so we can, the map. That was the detour for commercial traffic, was it? Is that what you were saying?
That's the detour on state-maintained roads. That's the detour that will be signed. So anyone not familiar with, with the area will, will most likely follow the signs. But I did wanna draw attention to the fact that there is a shorter route um that we anticipate local travel will figure out and then use. Um, so there could be an uptick of traffic on those roads.
So the road you're talking about is Priest Road that's gonna go around behind the school. My thing is if we're gonna do this construction, I like the one-month period so that we can get people back on one fifty-six. And you have any one fifty-two and using that road. We do not wanna start this project in the spring because that is a dirt road and that becomes a mud road.
Muddening.
Uh, so the summer and to the fall would be the ideal time for the project if you're gonna do it uh for that area. Cause you're right, everybody's gonna use, cause that's, if you're coming from a part of town, you're going to the dump. That's the way you're gonna go Priest Road. You're, I mean, fire and everybody's gonna use Priest Road. At least it's a nice wide road, but it, it's just a dirt road.
So I think, I think Priest Road, um, the road I have in dash lines, I know it's hard to read. Is Freeman Hall Road. So i- is Priest Road the one right near the, the fire department in the school?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So yeah, so that, that's a, gonna be a lot shorter than even the twelve-mile route that um I have on the map there.
Well, cause Priest is gonna bring you to Freeman Hall, it's gonna bring you over to Jibig, it's gonna bring you back over onto the other side of one fifty-two right down the uh road from where your construction's starting.
Yep.
Okay, what about, I mean, use the commercial traffic? I mean, that could be anything, track the trailers and all that. I don't know if these roads can handle that, that amount of vehicles.
No, no, yeah, but those, that kind of, that commercial traffic is gonna be redirected to Route four and then one twenty-five. We're not gonna send.
There'll be, there'll be signs on either end of one fifty-two?
Yeah, there'll be signs everywhere with the detour. It'll be, it'll be well, it'll be very clear.
All right.
And just to clarify that detour a little bit, this is Jason Tremblay, the, the Anthony D O T. When we say twenty-two miles, it's almost to get somebody from one side of the bridge all the ways around to the other side. So I don't, don't know quite who was speaking, but yeah, if we put signs at either side of one fifty-two, if people are trying to get to the other side, they could continue down Route four and pick up one twenty-five. So it's not actually cutting off their shortcut, but there are ways to get around it. It's, wouldn't actually be a full twenty-two miles unless you're on one side of the bridge and wanting to the other side. But, and we do realize that the fire station is in essence on the sort of the southeast side and it may need to get to the, the northwest side. So that was a concern when we were exploring these options, but I think when I did go into Google, Priest Road, it did seem to be a dirt road. It seemed to be well-traveled, but we, I can appreciate the concern that in the springtime it is mud, but if we're having to close the bridge for that one month, we can make it so it is in the summertime, so it avoids any school traffic and also by that point in time, hopefully the road will be dry enough so it can be passable. Thank you, Tony.
Again, I, I think I'd want some input from the police and fire chief as well. Okay.
Ben, Ben, uh, Fawn was here. I don't know if she still is.
She, uh, she is.
Oh, i- i- if she's willing to come up and talk.
Chief, Chief Woodman, uh, and there you are.
Yeah, yeah, hello.
Hello.
Welcome, Chief.
So I'm here. I'm not, I'm not sure that anybody's gonna like what I have to say. Um, so I obviously would not be um inclined to do um anything with Option A, I think we're calling it. The accelerated um of one month shutting both lanes of travel down on a highly trafficked road. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
And so I, you know, certainly, um, and I could, I, I can't tell you the math or how many residents live on the west side of town, um, you know, Nottingham. We, literally, they have their own zip code. So we're talking about a corridor that if I'm at the, any ti- anywhere on the e- east side of the road, if I get a call and I go, try to go code. And I have to go down Priest Road, then to, you know, uh Freeman Hall Road or to Jibig Road or whatever, whatever the case may be. It's going to significantly, you know, reduce my time of getting to a ma- you know, major accident, a fire, uh, a shots fired call, any, any kind of emergency that I, you know, we have that, you know, we respond to all fire rescue calls. Even to, to take that route, you guys are talking about Priest Road. Um, I don't know if anybody's driven code. When I say code, I mean lights and siren, we're trying to get somewhere down these back roads of Nottingham. It's extremely unsafe. We're talking about dirt roads that, yes, they're graded as well, they could be and maintained as well, they could be, but we all know when the major, you know, flood, you know, rain comes in, those roads get washed away pretty quickly. Um, so from a public safety standpoint, I can't put a price tag on and I can't tell you how many times that I gotta go down. If we think of, if we're talking about residents on one fifty-two, anywhere from Freeman Hall Road to Route four, we're talking about maybe fifty to a hundred houses that I have to get to. And if I even have to take any kind of shortcut, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna create issues. I can't rely on mutual aid. Um, they have their own things, you know, mutual aid is for emergency-type situations. If we can plan ahead with this and not shut down Route one fifty-two, then I, I think that's the best option. I'd be happy to take any questions or clarify anything else that I can.
Any questions for Chief Woodman?
No, no, I mean, I can appreciate.
I, I don't agree with you, but I'm sorry for that. I still think the one month is the best plan. But I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, I, I, again, I just, I think that the lives and safety of the peo- the citizens that live on that side um of our community, which is like over forty-six square miles. If there's another way to do this, I think that's the best option. I, I can also speak for the fire chief. I had a conversation with him. I, I don't think he's on this call, but he's opposed to it as well. Um, he is, is of the opinion with me for public safety that we at least uh try to maintain one lane of travel.
Okay.
This, this Tyler, I, 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 the concern I have is is what Tony was telling us. I mean, this road, I mean, it's part of the, the bridge or whatever. Might be unsafe as it is right now, and if we take it down to one lane, how's a fire truck or whatever, is that gonna support the weight or, I mean, that's, that's a concern like that. Emergency vehicles, will it be safe to, to travel that one lane, especially with commercial vehicles?
I mean, if, if we were gonna put traffic on it, we would upgrade it to the point of making it um safe. Um, it, it would, i- if for some reason we felt we had to loadpost it because we thought something, you know, over a certain weight would be unsafe, then we would do that. But um if we did do one lane, um and, and that gets into how, how I said, a little bit more expensive to do that one-lane option. We don't know what we would have to do to the remainder of the bridge that's still there. You know, in, in light of upgrades or additional strengthenings.
I got a question for you, Anthony.
Sure.
So if the board decides they wanna go with the, the two-year plan or whatever it is, the one-lane closure in this there, is the state gonna say, okay, we're gonna do it your way? Even though we know it's gonna cost more money? Or is the state gonna go back, get not, not trying to say, or is the state gonna go, no, we're doing the one, the one-month way, cause that's the way we're gonna do it?
Uh, thankfully.
Their road, they're gonna tell us what they wanna do.
Yeah, I mean, thankfully, people a- above me make, make those harder decisions.
But that could happen, could it not?
Well, you know, you know, we, we, we're constrained by various budgets, um, just like everybody else is too, so.
Absolutely, that's why I'm asking the question.
If, if something.
Can I jump in, Tony?
Sure, yes.
Hi, David Scott, I'm the project manager for this project. Uh, we presented this to our executive office. They understand the concerns that the town was likely to have regarding one lane and they understand that, that uh one-lane option might not be looked upon favorably and they were open. Uh, I'm sorry, the closing the bridge might not be looked upon favorably. I think the state is, is willing to put in a, is one lane or do something to maintain one fifty-two throughout the length of the product, throughout the duration of the project. But it's going to be alternating one-way traffic throughout, uh, likely throughout a winter season, which is not going to make snowplowing easy. Uh, it's going to be a hassle for motorists consistently. Uh, so there's a lot of downsides from a, from the towns, I would think from the town's perspective for having to keep the road open, whereas we would hope that we could be able to do the more economical solution of uh shutting the bridge down for the twenty-eight days and, and getting this thing reopened to traffic quickly.
So this will be our first stoplight in Nottingham if we have to do a one-lane road, cause we don't have a stoplight in Nottingham.
Yeah, I live in Chester and we've just got a blinking light, so.
Yeah, but on a stop, uh, red, green and yellow, like we will there.
Yeah, absolutely.
So i- i- actually, I wanna ask Fawn a question. And I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to spitball some ideas and trying to think of how we could make this work, right? You know, I get that shutting down the road is not ideal from your point of view and I I mean, my, my estimate is that having to do that loop, despite the fact that it's dirt road, if you have to do that detour around those dirt roads, I would guess it's gonna add four to six minutes to your response times, which is not good, especially if you have to go, like you said, lights and sirens. But for that, i- if we decided to go that route for that thirty days, if we could staff an additional officer and keep him on that side of town, right? Almost in a directed patrol sense. That way you've got a presence out there and, you know, and have the other, you know, officer on the, on the other side of town that's not stranded. Can, can that work, do you think, if we, you know, if we plan far enough ahead for that and budget for it and do you think that's doable? Would that be workable?
You know, Tony, the short answer to that is no, I don't, I don't have enough staff. I guess if I hired another officer and was able to get her, my her trained in the academy, you know, you know what I mean? So I don't think that that, yeah, that, I mean, honestly, that's not an option. No, I mean, again, you know, we're, we're running as much as I can. I got a person in the academy and may I'll have somebody else in the academy. I I just don't have the staff to have somebody out there do, you know, doing that. In a perfect world, yes, and obviously we do have some overlap. So I'm sure that there's gonna be sometimes anyway that somebody, you know, flip a coin, that somebody's on that side of town, just like anything else. I'm just, if you want my opinion as a public safety officer, as the chief of police, I would obviously never want any more travel time to a call, you know, to a, to a major emergency. So my, my alw- my, my, my suggestion would always be to have some kind of lane open, however they need to do that and however much that costs, you know, D O T to do it, that's what we need to do.
Okay. No, I just wanted to.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great question. I, I understand you're thinking outside the box. I, you know, I was thinking the same thing.
And one of the, one of the considerations that I have asked communities in the past regarding the consideration of, you know, what type of delay, if any, would be acceptable is, is what is your response time to your most distant citizens? And if we were to close off this crossing, you know, the, the people that it affects, in this case to the north side of your community, does that put any of them beyond where some of your most distant citizens to the south already lie? You know, for, for response times. If, if you could get there two minutes today and, and your furthest citizens live twelve minutes away and, and if we took out this northern crossing, now your northern citizens have a, an eight-minute response time, well, they're still way better off than those who are twelve minutes away to the south.
Again, I don't mean to be argumentative with Fawn, Fawn, so don't take this. It's not personal here, it's just throwing out stuff. Is the Priest Road the only part that's uh unpaved? When you hit Freeman Hall, that's all paved, Jibig's all paved.
Yeah, windy, curvy roads that are posted at twenty-five, but yes, they are all paved. Yeah.
But they are. One of your concerns was stating the fact that, again, it is, I mean, I, I just think the one-month uh is the, again, I, I have a hard time thinking, one month and everything back to normal, well, not back to normal, but that, that, that one-lane road there is gonna be a real pain for two years. Real pain.
Did they say two years? I, I don't know the, the timeframe on it. I, I, I'm sorry. Did I miss that part?
It's gonna take a while.
Not to interrupt, but if, if we phase construction, then we would be looking at two construction seasons. So two years.
Yeah, again, my, my opinion still remains the same. I, again, I, I just think that, yeah, I, it doesn't change the way that I feel about that part now. Nope.
No, we're not looking at a commencement of work until, was it twenty twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yep, that's correct.
So we've got time to chew on this.
Yeah, for sure. We, we don't, we don't have to make a decision tonight um by any means. We do plan to um take your feedback from tonight and then um come back um to you all along with with the public um and get their input as well. Um, and at that point, we will have done a little bit more um design and, and some more number crunching. Um, so we'll have more information um at that time. So, so i- it will be brought up again. But it sounds like you all are somewhat divided and, and we don't have um the police, uh, the fire chief here tonight, so we haven't gotten his input, is that correct?
Well, Fawn can speak for the fire chief. She already spoke to him about it.
Yeah, this, this is Chris. We, I've had that conversation with fire chief too, and he was, he would be even more virulently, virulently opposed than, than Chief Woodman, I think.
Okay.
Uh, his, you know, hi- his ambulance door is within sight of that bridge, so he'd be, he'd be very concerned. When, when, when you look at the, the, the speed option, Option A, Tony, uh, it, it saves the state some humongous sum of money by only have to mov- only having to mobilize once and you're in and out in however many months. What's, what is the rough order of magnitude of those savings?
Uh, we're um about three hundred thousand dollars um at this point, you know, all of our numbers are preliminary, so.
It's very early, yeah.
Yeah, but about three hundred thousand.
Okay, on a, on a total job of?
So the, the A B C, um, Option A, um, we're looking at about one point one million and then the phase construction, Option B would be about one point four.
Okay, and ha- has it ever been ventured that D O T would sit, would, would share some of those savings to help offset the increased costs that we could incur because of it?
I believe it has, um, and they, the calculation, Ja- Jason Tremblay can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the calculation is, is somewhat based on how many users the road has.
I'll, I'll jump in. Uh, it's gotta be pretty creative in ways that D O T could participate our savings with the town. I have only seen it done in one situation and that was with us um going in after the project was built, so under the same contract with the same contractor, but we were able to do some, some touch-up paving for one community when we had done some research ahead of time to say, okay, this is the condition of your pavement. We know you're gonna have some extra traffic on this road that you wouldn't that you wouldn't have had if the DOT hadn't utilized, taken advantage of some of the town roads. I, I can't even remember if we might have signed the town roads as part of the detour. But it can't be a, here's a check for half the savings.
This isn't, this isn't stimulus money. This is a.
No, and this is, and yeah, no, this is not stimulus money.
Okay. Because I, I'm, I'm thinking not only of the increase, you know, if we were to get quote creative, which, you know, means we pull things out of a hat. There's a lot of just upfront cost with that for us. And then the, the wear and tear, even, even in a month, to take all of the 152 traffic and put it on Priest Road and, and wherever it spills out from there, whether it's Jubig or Freeman Hall or wherever it is. You know, those are, it's going to take, you know, X number of months or years off the life of the roads that are there. And the gravel would be even worse.
Yeah. And again, we, we wouldn't be putting all the traffic of 152 on those roads because we would still be signing the state detour. But we do recognize that your local roads would get some additional.
Yeah, and I, you probably know more about the, 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 the traffic, who the traffic is on 152. But I think our, our perception would be that it's not a lot of Route 4 to Route 125 traffic. I, I think a lot of the traffic on 152 is, is more local than that. You, you probably have a better answer on that, but.
I, I do.
There's a limited amount of, of traffic going from Northwood to Lee on 152, going the full length without stopping in Nottingham, right?
I, I can't answer the trip counts and, and who's going where.
Yeah, well, I, maybe other local folks would, would weigh in on that. But a, a lot of the traffic that that we would take off of this bridge is just going to go on Priest Road, or it's going to go the long, you know, it, it, it's going to stay local, so.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, me too. I don't see a lot of, a lot of commercial vehicles. You know, I see local delivery trucks, you know, FedEx, UPS. You know, the gas truck, the gas tanker that does deliveries to the local, you know, convenience stores, gas stations, you know, but I rarely see large commercial vehicles on 152.
But I would be interested, if you guys are interested, I would be willing to pursue some type of contractual language that would restore Priest Road to whatever condition it's in before our project starts. And I think that is something that we could discuss.
Well, it's in the preliminary stages right now, so we got plenty of time. That's something certainly that we can explore. Is there any other questions or comments in regards to this?
Do you go down to the last, second to last slide or so, Ben, just because there's a, maybe some other things there that? Oh, sorry, go back. Uh, one more, please. So, okay, I think we, you know, the school bus would, I'm, I'm assuming since the schools are in the school, you know, buses would be there. But if we did do close something in the summertime, that's when school's out. You know, some of, I don't know, have you seen flooding there in the past? I think, like Tony says, it opens up pretty wide, so it's probably not a whole lot of flooding over the road. But I'm sure that area gets a lot of water on either side of the bridge. And, you know, sometimes with the closures, we, if there's a bicycle and pedestrian presence in the area, sometimes those citizens have a concern if a bridge is closed for a month or so of how they can get around. So, um, you know, those are some of the other concerns we try to, you know, think about as we're moving forward with design and thinking of ideas and any other concerns you may have. So if everybody's okay with the input here, then I'm fine. I just want to make sure we at least cover it if necessary.
Yeah, actually, when it comes to flooding, you know, the Mother's Day flood in, what was it, '07? And then the other big one that was within a couple of years of that. Both of those situations, the water was flowing above the level of the pavement, right over the bridge. So, I mean, I know those are, you know, those quote unquote 100 year floods. But, you know, if, if there's any possibility of raising that road bed, you know, even, even a little bit to, you know, if, if, if the water can be diverted, if it, if another extreme flood like that happened, water could be diverted around the bridge as opposed to flowing over it and, you know, damaging it. You know, I would do that. I'm not a bridge engineer, so I don't know how you accommodate issues like that, but this is something to think about.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you could, this, this sounds fair, but if that area right there, the water level, even during our drought, the summer stayed the way it is because there's a beaver dam down there holding back a real lot of water. So I'm not saying that you go take out the beaver dam, but you definitely reduce your chances of flooding.
Yeah, actually, I can show you where it is too.
Right, so because the water height is, we didn't lose any water this spring there. I mean, I mean, even the summer with the drought, it was still full with water in that area.
So see this bush right here in the middle of the downstream photo? The beaver mound is right behind that. Like, you can throw a rock from the bridge and hit it. So the, the dam is not far, probably back, just back here.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah. So like, if, you know, if you ultimately decided to do the secondary, the temporary bridge thing, you'd probably want to put it on the upstream side, but the way the highway bends, that's the longer span to put the temporary roadway, which means the more expensive side. So something else to think about.
Okay, thank you for that input. And then I believe there was one more slide at the bottom there about, okay, I think we probably discussed some of this, but if you want to talk about it, Tony, but this is, yeah, the construction was scheduled to begin in 2024, 2025, so there is a bit of time. You know, when we, like Tony said, we're going to try to come, we'll come back to a public informational meeting when we've looked at, we've been adding your input to what we're looking at. Uh, and then we still have to coordinate with the Culture and Natural Resource Agency meetings and complete the NEPA process, so. And I think the last slide, we just had questions which we've had all along, so we appreciate the chance to speak about the project. And if there's, anybody has any other questions at the present moment, uh, please feel free to ask. If not, you can reach out to Tony and then he can pass them along to Rebecca or myself or whoever it needs to be, but I don't want to take up your whole evening. I know we're all remote, so everybody, once we're done, we just go home because we're there, but I appreciate you giving us the time to discuss the project.
We have a timeline as to when you want to present this to the public? Uh, it, it'll be in, in a few months. We're, we're going to do some more design work. And we can do it sooner if, if you think that would be desirable. Um, but the original plan was, was a few, few months, I believe. All right, well, just keep in mind, we're, we're, you know, our elections and all that stuff have been bushed back, so people are going to be more focused on that right now than any bridge that needs to be replaced. When do those end? The deliberative session is in April and the actual election is in June. Okay, so you think it might be a good idea to wait until after June? I would say so, but then now we're getting into people going on vacations in the summertime. So I don't know if August would be a timeframe that you want to look at. Okay, um, we'll definitely take that into consideration. I appreciate that information. Okay, any other questions, comments for these folks? I'm good. No? Well, thank you, gentlemen, and ma'am, I appreciate you coming before the board and presenting this. And I hope that going forward, that we can find an easy solution to this. All right, thanks, guys. That was very helpful from, from our end, so I, I appreciate it and hope you have a great evening. Thank you. Have a good night. All right, general business, Route 4 property.
Are we going to non-public about Route 4, or is that?
Uh, we got two things to do, one in public and one in non-public. I would suggest we talk about, well, let just to set the table here. You had met with the Norwood Group, I think it was in December, as well as another firm or two, and had sent me off to go finalize, selected a broker to work with. We, we have not got that far tonight. I was hoping we would, we would get the green light to do that tonight. We are essentially ready to get under contract and, and start the next steps in the marketing of the, of the property. We can talk about the arrangements with Norwood, the business arrangements between us here in, in public session. That is, that's all public information. And then if you have no other public business, we'll go into, we can go into non-public and talk about pricing strategy, sales strategy, and the things, you know, that we don't want to expose publicly. So. Well, we, what we, let's first see if you have any questions. Let me introduce, first introduce Chris, Chris Norwood and Brian O'Brien, who you met with last time, are both here on the, on the call with us. And let's see if you have any questions or concerns about the, the agreement between us. I sent you what is, what is a very late draft, and I, I think all the language that you saw as edited is, is going to be the final language. Chris can verify that for me. So let's, let's start with the, the brokerage agreement and go from there.
Is there anything you want me to put on the?
No, I think it's probably, it's probably messy enough. It's, you, you all, you all have it. You got it from me electronically. And you may, you may not have anything on it, and if you want to, if, if you're comfortable with it and you want to authorize me to sign it with a vote tonight, that's really all I need to accomplish with it.
I'm comfortable with it.
I didn't see anything stood out for me, so.
That has, it has been reviewed by our council and, and he gave me some edits to, to propose to Norwood. And Chris has indicated that he's fine with those today, so. You know, we're, we're comfortable with where it is.
Is that the right to sell agreement?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I was fine with that.
Okay, do you need a motion, Chris, or something, or?
Uh, yeah, that would be perfect.
Who wants to make a motion?
Just authorize me to enter into a sales agreement with Norwood. I'll send you the final thing when it's done, but you just give me that authorization.
And I'll make a motion that the select board give town administrator Chris Sterndale authorization to enter into a sales agreement with Norwood Realty for the purpose of marketing town properties for sale.
All right, good. Motion to second. All in favor? Ivan Bartlett.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore. Sorry, I was just finding something.
Okay.
Long word stuck in the contract.
So do we have any other public business? I'm guessing not. All right.
Did you, Chris, did you want to talk about the dedication or the cover for the report or?
Uh, you, you all got communications from, from Kelly on that. Is everybody comfortable with where we're headed?
Yes.
Yeah, I like, yeah.
Yep.
It's good because we're going to print really quick. Yeah, there's the cover. This is, this is as 2020 a cover as Kelly could come up with.
Nice.
It looks like a, like a cover on some Halloween story.
Well, 2020 was kind of scary, right?
Yeah, I guess it was.
That's a historic society boot, booting, right?
The dame school, yes.
Yeah, cool.
Okay.
All right, so your, your, your non-public is D as in dog. Ben, you, you recall the last time we went into non-public, we said we ought to explain that process coming out. Remember that?
Yeah.
And if you want to do that before we, we go dark, that would be good.
So is this something that we're going to have to do every time?
I think on Zoom, it's probably wise, yeah. We have different crowd every time.
We, we, we'll enter into non-public and discuss topics as long as it takes, and at which point then we'll reemerge from non-public, seal the minutes, and then we'll adjourn the, the meeting. Does that sound about right, Chris?
Yes, so there will be another public portion of this meeting, but we can't say when it's going to be. And then we can only, and, and we can really just say that we're all, the only public purpose is to come out and deal with the minutes and close the, and close the meeting. So you won't be missing anything. But by, by, by law, we need to be public again as we come out of these sessions. So we will be on Zoom. We just don't know when.
So for what that means, for people that are watching via Zoom, uh, you're basically going to be put into the waiting room, and if you want to wait there, you know, it's sort of the digital equivalent of stepping out into the hallway. Um, and then when we come back into public session, we would readmit you into the meeting, into the Zoom meeting, and then you can watch us close the meeting. So that's how that, that would work.
Okay.
That said, we'll make a motion that select board enter non-public session per RSC 91-83, Section 2D.
I'll second that.
You have a motion to second. All in favor? Ivan Bartlett.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore.
Okay.
Uh, this is Steve. Can I make one comment before we go into non-public?
Sure.
I just think you should put up Anthony's, uh, their weather bees contact information well, in the report, whatever you make public, so people can start to give him public input. That says you guys have been all, all night tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, we can get that to Lorraine. She can include it in the minutes.
Thank you.
All right, we are now in non-public. I'm going to pause recording.
A motion in a second. Seal the minutes. All in favor? Ivan Bartlett.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore.
Okay, no other public, uh, uh, business, uh, take a motion to adjourn?
Uh, make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Are we, are we back in public right now?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, we, you got to open up the room, Tony, if there's anybody uh, in there.
It was just Lorraine.
Okay.
And I let her back in.
Hi, Lorraine.
She's not there.
She's not listening.
They're in spirit.
All right, so motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor? Ivan Bartlett.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Meeting is closed. Good night, everybody.
Good night, Nottingham.